Mayor, Mayor, I was told that for us, we have to use the little buttons to speak. The ones that we usually use. Okay, so make sure.
Tom, you ready? Sorry, Tom, you ready? Okay.
Yeah, what?
All right, we're gonna attempt to start this thing. COVID is teaching us all, so please bear with us. Good evening, I would like to welcome you all to the Dania Beach City Commission Hybrid Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, September 13th, it is 7:04 PM, call the roll, please. Sorry, Tom, just dashed down there.
Mayor James.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Hodgman.
Yeah.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Attorney Andrew.
Here.
All right, I'd like to take a moment of silence and remembrance for all the victims versus honored 9/11. Thank you, can you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we'll get right into our presentations. The first, if you cannot tell, he always has a smiling face, I have never seen him upset or angry at anyone, and his smile is very contagious. I'm Broward County Property Appraiser Marty Carey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor James, I really appreciate you having me on, and thank you for the great, oh, excuse me, oh. All right, oh, and thank you so much for the great work that you do for the people of Dania Beach and also your colleagues. I have to tell you, I love Dania Beach, I know it's Broward's first city, and no matter what, every single birthday that I have, the first place I go is my favorite restaurant in the face of the earth, I have once a year McDonald's, and then always at night to Jackson's Ice Cream. And so it is just a great place to come, but thank you so much again for you, for your great work and everybody that serves on the, on the commission there, I think it's just awesome. Uh, I would, I promise I won't be too long, I wanted to just talk about a few things, the first, I just wanted to quickly talk about the, uh, the trim notice that we recently sent out to, uh, all of Dania Beach's residents, also kind of what we do at our office. I was then hoping to give the commission and yourself a kind of an idea and a snapshot as to where Dania Beach is right now, and it's doing very, very well. And then I just wanted to briefly touch on a great program we have in our office called Owner Alert that's designed to protect people from title fraud. And before I do any of that, though, I also do, very quickly, just want to mention your great staff, you know, uh, at our office, in order to do the best job we possibly can, we need to work with all staffs in every difference, every city, in order to ensure that all values put on the tax roll, we just work together in so many ways. And your staff is absolutely excellent, and I want to give a, a special shout out to one of my dearest friends, who is your Finance Director, IT Director, Frank DiPaolo, his only issue that I don't like is that he's a Gator, so I also brought this for him, too. Go Canes, um, but with that said, for the residents, again, I'm Marty Carey, your Broward County Property Appraiser. There are a few main functions to our office. The first function is we determine the value of every piece of property in Broward County for tax purposes, whether it's residential, commercial, tangible personal property, or essentially assessed property which are railroads. And so when you pay your property taxes, the amount you pay is based on the value of the property that we set, and the tax rate set by Dania Beach, the County Commission, the School Board, and other taxing authorities. And so I always tell everybody, please go on our website at bcpa.net, uh, put in your property address and take a look at your property. And if you disagree with the value of your property, give me a holler, I'll go through it with you, and if there's information that you have that we don't have, maybe it can give us an opportunity to adjust it downward, which could reduce the amount of property taxes you'll ultimately pay. The second thing that we do is we give tax saving exemptions to people that qualify. And there are a lot of exemptions under Florida law that people qualify for, the most important one is the homestead exemption. Once you get that, there are many other exemptions you may qualify for, too. There are exemptions for seniors, for veterans, for first responders, for people with disabilities. So please go on our website at bcpa.net, click on exemptions, and if there's something you're not getting, please contact me so we can apply that, so it'll be reflected in your tax bill. And that kind of quickly brings me to the trim notice. Last month, you received a document from me in the mail, the trim notice, the truth and millage notice. I always tell everybody, it's not a tax bill. It's basically a document, so you can make sure you don't overly pay in your property taxes, and that when your real tax bill comes out in November, that it's accurate and correct. And here's what it shows, it shows the value of your property for tax purposes, it shows all the tax saving exemptions you're currently getting, it shows the proposed tax rates that your local governments like Dania Beach, the School Board, the County Commission, others are contemplating setting, and it also shows the dates and times that they're going to be discussing, uh, the tax rates that they're thinking about levying for this year. And I always tell everybody, if you have any concerns with the value of your property, or if you're not getting every tax saving exemption you're entitled to, you can contact me by September 20th of this year, uh, to be able to, so we can go through it, make sure your value's correct, and apply any exemption you're currently not getting. However, if you're concerned about the millage rates your local governments are thinking about setting, or if you think they're, they're, if you agree with them, please attend the budget hearings or listen to the trim notice, you can make, uh, you can let your, your elected officials know how, what you think about the proposed tax rates they're thinking about setting. Now, the second thing I wanted to quickly talk about for, uh, for the mayor and the commission is kind of where Dania Beach is right now, and Dania Beach is doing very, very well. And I have to say this, I'm actually surprised where all the cities are in Broward County right now. Because the date that we determine the value of all property for tax purposes is January 1st, and we utilize the data from the previous year to determine the values that people pay their property taxes on. And so as you know, 2020 was very difficult for so many people, a lot of businesses struggled. And last year, I did not think we were going to see an increase in value for this year. But when we started looking at all the data, I realized that I was wrong. And the reason I was wrong is a few reasons. Dania Beach is in a very interesting city. Ten percent of the value of the parcels are commercial, and ninety percent are residential, so the majority of property taxes are paid on residential properties. And Dania Beach saw, uh, uh, actually a decrease in some of its commercial, for example, as a result of COVID. You have thirty-eight hotels in, in Dania Beach, and each one saw about a ten percent decrease based on the effects of COVID. Other businesses saw decreases, too. But Dania Beach also saw a significant amount of new construction, especially at Dania Point where you had overall about a hundred and nineteen million dollars of new construction added to the tax roll. But the real reason why Dania Beach is seeing an increase, and I'll definitely get into that increase in a second, is the fact that a lot of people are moving to Dania Beach from all over the country and making Dania Beach their home. People are coming from New York, Connecticut, California, really any state where there's an income tax, they're leaving that and they're coming to Dania Beach. They're buying homes there for pretty large amounts, and they're making Dania Beach their home, that's really, really what's driving the, the, most of the increase in Dania Beach and also throughout the rest of the county. Let me give you an idea. On January 1st, 2020, the market value of all property in Dania Beach, basically if you took all the, all the commercial and residential properties sold in the open market on January 1st, 2020, you would have got about four point nine six six billion dollars. Fast forward to, uh, January 1st, 2021, and that increased about seven point six percent to about five point three four five billion dollars. And again, that's really based on the increase in residential and a lot of the new construction that's been added. Now, the taxable value is the value that you all are looking at right now, that you're going to set your millage rates on, which is going to determine the amount of money that you're going to have in your budget to provide great services to the people of Dania Beach. And on January 1st, 2020, the taxable value in Dania Beach was right about four point three six five billion dollars. This year, there's been a six point three seven percent increase in taxable value to about four point six four three billion dollars. So what that really means is if you, your proposed millage rate is five point nine 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 eight, if you keep it at that, as a result of that six point three seven percent increase, you're going to get about one million six hundred sixty-nine thousand twenty-seven dollars more this year than last year. And what's really important to note for the people of Dania Beach is that if you're a homesteaded property owner, you're, the value you're taxed on is only going up one point three percent, and that's because it's capped. If you're a homesteaded property owner, really that increase in revenue is being paid for by the new construction that's added, and all the people moving here to Dania Beach, uh, from somewhere else, who didn't have homestead exemptions before. Uh, in Dania Beach, you have five thousand six hundred eighty-nine homestead exemptions. You have four hundred ninety-four low-income seniors who struggle all the time to make ends meet, they get a very important senior exemption. One exemption that I'm so proud of Dania Beach for adopting is called the Long-Term Senior Exemption. And I'm very proud of Dania Beach because not every city has adopted this exemption, only about half our cities have. And here's the way it works, if you are sixty-five or older, and you made under last year thirty thousand one hundred dollars, and if you've been in your home for twenty-five years or more, and the value of your home is under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're fully exempt from the city portion of the tax bill and the county portion of the tax bill. And here's what I love so much about that exemption, as you can see, this year only a hundred and thirty-one residents qualified for, and Dania Beach has thousands of residents. So what that really means is the D, the fact they're not paying property taxes is really not a huge loss of revenue to the city. But those seniors who struggle every single day to make ends meet, get to put a lot of money in their pocket to help make their lives a little bit better. And I love the fact that Dania Beach had the foresight to adopt that excellent exemption, because it really does help people that struggle in our community. Uh, you also have forty-two veterans who are totally permanently disabled that have made Dania Beach their home, those American heroes pay no property taxes. And you also have two first responders who are totally permanently disabled, who are exempt from property taxes as well. The median, the market price of a median single-family home in Dania Beach, and by the way, you have five thousand three hundred twenty-six single-family homes, the median market value of what a person would pay on the open market, right now is about two hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the average taxable value is a hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. And the reason there's such a discrepancy is because Dania Beach is a great place to live, so when people buy a home there, they bought it maybe, maybe many years ago, they don't leave, they love it, they stay. And so every single year, that value's capped, that's why there's a discrepancy, a big one, between the market value and the taxable value in Dania Beach. The median condominium value, uh, that market value is a hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, and the average taxable value is a hundred and eight thousand forty dollars. And just to give you an idea, the, uh, two, the three biggest, uh, uh, new construction projects added to the tax roll, two of them were in Dania Point. Uh, one was basically multifamily in Dania Point, it was added at about fifty-five million dollars, was added to the tax roll. And also you had a shopping center where another twenty-five million was added to the tax roll. And also with Dania Point, it's my understanding that a hundred percent of Dania Point is complete, and then in phase two, fifty percent is complete, and there are still some very big projects that may go on, uh, next year if they are substantially complete, one's a hotel, and also the Spirit Airlines building. So, uh, that'll be, uh, next year would be reflected, uh, if they're, if they're on in, uh, the taxable value. Uh, the last thing I wanted to quickly talk about, Mayor, if it's okay, uh, just for the residents, is a great program that we developed in our office called Owner Alert. And Owner Alert is really designed to protect people from title fraud. And the reason it's important is because unfortunately, it's my belief that South Florida is the title fraud capital of the world. And the reason being is you have, uh, the recording divisions for every county, and every county has one, has a ministerial duty to accept any document changing ownership that's filed with them. So what you have is you have people who I think are criminals, what they do is they file fake deeds with the recording divisions, and then they take those fake deeds and they try to extort people for money, or mortgage rent, or even sell their property. Uh, to give you an idea, they're very sophisticated, the people that do this, they'll even go through your social media, they know when you're on an extended vacation, and then what they'll do is when you're gone, they'll file that fake deed and they'll do something nefarious with it. And ultimately, you're going to get your property back, but by the time you do, you probably spent a lot of money in attorney's fees and your title is very clouded. And so we really wanted to give people the opportunity to fight the fraud before the fraud occurs. So we developed in-house, no taxpayer dollars were spent on it, a great program called Owner Alert. And here's the way it works, if you go to web dot bcpa dot net slash owner alert, you type in your name, and you type in your folio number, or your folio number, which you can grab there, and also your email address. And if we have your email address on file, you're automatically verified. If we don't, we ask for your driver's license or your Florida ID. If we don't, if you don't have that, there are other ways to get verified as well. And once you're verified, as soon as somebody files a fake deed on your property, actually if any document changing ownership is filed on your property, you're going to be notified very quickly thereafter, so you can take the appropriate actions that you need to take to be able to protect yourself, uh, from, uh, fraudulent activity on your property. It's really a great program designed to protect your most important asset, your home, and it's free to the public, so please jump on there. Uh, over the past few months, we've had about a hundred and twenty-some-odd-thousand Broward residents sign up, and it's my goal to get every Broward resident to sign up. With that said, Madam Mayor, I hope I didn't speak for too long. Uh, like I said, I really appreciate the great work that you do and the great work your colleagues do. On behalf of the city of Dania Beach, I am a big fan, uh, and just wanted to ask if there are any questions that anybody had, I'd be happy to answer.
No, well, uh, you have something, okay, but before, um, Commissioner Llewellyn, I just wanted to know if, um, about this Owner Alert, because you did speak kind of fast. If you could send it over to the city manager, maybe we can create, um, a social media post and get it out there, and you know, um, so our residents could definitely sign up for that. Fraud is at an all-time high, everyone's wearing Gucci and Louis Vuitton and Fendi and, and living their best life on other people's dime, so I definitely want to be able to protect our residents the best way we know how, so I appreciate you coming and telling us about many of the programs, but that's the one I was most impressed with.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and, and I'll have my staff send that up right on over tomorrow, I really appreciate y'all doing that, and I'm sorry if I talk too fast, I've had five Red Bulls, two coffees, and a Diet Coke, so I'm a little wired right now.
You're good.
Thank you. Hi, Marty, can you hear me okay?
I can, I can, Commissioner, it's great to see you, and thank you also for inviting me on.
Absolutely, I was just gonna say, we saw you a couple weeks back, um, at a meeting, and you gave such a great presentation, I had to have you here, especially when we're going to be voting on millage rates and all of that tonight. Uh, but something, I just had two comments real quick. One, I wanted to make sure that we really emphasize how important it is that if people are eligible for homestead, that they get homestead on their properties, because I know there are several people out there that still don't have it, and it saves so much money on your taxes every year. Um, and I know you're trying to educate people on that, and it's, it's really important. And the other thing is, I was just curious which socks you had on tonight, because at the last meeting, you had socks with pictures of your face on them.
Actually, I don't have any socks on tonight.
We're at home tonight, I see.
Exactly, shorts with no socks, you know, but, uh, and you're, and you're so right about the, about the homestead exemption, you know, uh, I always tell people, not only does it take fifty thousand dollars of value off the tax roll, that can save you eight hundred, nine hundred, maybe a thousand bucks a year, but it really protects you going forward, because every year after you have a homestead exemption, the value you're taxed on can't go up more than three percent, it's such an important exemption. And also, if you move somewhere else, over time, if you have a homestead exemption, you can move a lot of that value, you don't pay taxes on to a new home. So please, anybody out there that's listening, if you don't have a homestead exemption, you can sign up by September 20th of this year, in order to have it be reflected in your November tax bill.
Thank you again, Marty, for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Hey, Marty.
You gotta cut this off. Oh, Marco. Marco, no, mute that.
Sorry. All right, there you go, how's that better? Hey, Marty, it's me again.
Hey, Marco.
The, uh, uh, I know I drove you crazy the last meeting, I do, I want to ask on, on the alert, is that, um, does that also include, uh, commercial, uh, property that has taxes as well?
It does, it includes all property in Broward County, so everybody can sign up. So if it's a, uh, a homesteaded property, we probably have your email address on file to be verified. If it's a commercial property, we may not, uh, so there are other ways to get verified, but it at, anybody can sign up through, uh, either if you have commercial or residential properties, we want them all on there, so, uh, people are able to protect their property, so thank you for that great question, Marco.
The last question on that, too, is, when they do, when you do something to alert and you get notified of that alert, is it, is, uh, and I don't want to get into a lot of explanations, because it'd probably take forever, but to, to stop that early without spending a lot of money through going through attorneys, like that, is there, uh, we, maybe you can send the, the same thing, a quick way to, um, to stop it when we get the alert.
Absolutely.
People won't be able to afford to spend money if they get, to try to protect your house as well.
Yes, a, and, and actually, in the, uh, the alert when they get it, it kind of details some of the steps that people can take. And here's the key, it usually takes time for the fraud to perpetrate itself, because once the document's filed, then they have to do all kinds of things with it. So if you find out right at the beginning, uh, then there are some very easy steps to take to make sure that your property be protected, and that you won't have to come out of pocket with a lot of money trying to uncloud your title, and so I'll send all that over to Marco, thank you for, for asking.
Okay, thank you, Marty, you did great again.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Marty, have a good evening.
You, too, thank you, Mayor James, and again, it's all about the you. Take care, bye.
Next, we'll have a presentation by MPO's Brian Kalika. Kalika.
Can I, uh?
Good, good evening, Madam Mayor, um, took a second to get unmuted, I hope, uh, you and the commission are well. I am here to provide a brief presentation and then answer any questions that you may have. Uh, so let's figure out how to, I can share, there we go. Okay.
Oh, um, Commissioner Llewellyn, did you want to, no? No.
I was just gonna, um, introduce, I was just gonna introduce Brian as the Director of Transportation for the MPO, and I know that the last meeting, there was an, an ask that we bring, that I bring somebody from the MPO to discuss the Dania Beach, uh, West Dania Beach Boulevard project, so.
Okay, well, he'll, he'll probably, for the record, before you start, there, there's also a community meeting on the 27th.
I was gonna ask about that, uh, I, because I know that there is one, and I just saw the flyer here tonight, so I knew he was going to be doing something, so we want to make sure everybody knows about that as well.
Yes, um, definitely is a meeting on the 27th of September, and then we'll probably bring the item back, um, for voting, and to get past it on the 28th. Um, I've been in communications with, um, our deputy city man, deputy city manager, um, Candido, and he is well aware of it, but the flyers were just distributed today, so thank you, Brian, for coming out, and you'll be hanging out with us for a while.
I look forward to it. Uh, can you see my presentation screen?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic, thank you, so my name is Brian Kalika, and I represent the Broward MPO, so I'm just going to go through a very brief presentation and get to your questions. Uh, the history of this, and I want to start off with, uh, the actual project was submitted to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan on June 4th, uh, 2018, uh, by Dania Beach staff, and so I want to take a brief moment to let Mayor James know and Commissioner Llewellyn, I had both told you personally before that it had been in the MTP for quite some time. When I started preparing the presentation, I checked all the facts and found out that it was actually only recently added to the MTP. It went for approval at the MPO on December 12th of 2019, and the Oversight Board approved funding for the Dania 001 West Dania Beach Bridge, uh, project on June 4th, 2020, and the County Commission approved it through the two budget hearings in September 2020. Okay, so, I'm, for this slide, I'm just going to talk about the stops that are in place during this entire, uh, project. Uh, currently, you have been approved to receive four hundred and eighty thousand in design money utilizing cert tax funds. This must be done by September 30th, 2022, or the project is removed from funding recommendation by MAP Administration. Uh, so basically, if you don't utilize the design money, it just, it would automatically fall off from being, uh, built utilizing cert tax funds, and you'd have to use a different source such as state funds, uh, or even your own local funds. So also, uh, you can place parameters into the project when you send it to bid, uh, such as no displacement of residents, or utilize the current road northern boundary. And this is important, because I'm going to show you a map taken from the Broward County Property Appraisers website, uh, to show that there are a couple of issues, uh, that can, uh, pave the way for a smoother process. And everything must be approved from the commission for both parts, such as for the construction, as well as the design of the project. Uh, the design is three point five million, uh, and then they would be bidding on the design specifications that were already set out. And, uh, this is going to happen, if you do do the design, you will get that money, it's just a matter of when. Uh, this year's recommendations for construction were actually for 2026, so that earliest it would be approved for construction would be 2027, unless there was, you know, a rain of money from the heavens. Here is the map from the Broward County Property Appraisers, and the reason why I bring this up is because you can see that there are several homes right here. And if you look at the fourth parcel just north of the Dania Beach Boulevard, you can actually see that there's a car halfway into the easement of the, of the street easement right of way, that is owned by the city of Dania Beach, and there's actually another car that's parked just north of the road. So for that reason, uh, if you look at the box directly below where it says West Dania Beach Boulevard, that is owned by the city of Dania Beach right of way as well, as well as parcels on the other side, which is owned by the city of Dania Beach and Broward County. So I used the Broward County Property Appraisers, uh, estimate to see that the current roadway is about twenty feet wide, which is really too small to be two lanes. And I measured the bridge, uh, utilizing the Property Appraisers website, uh, for the first street bridge, and it measures about thirty-eight feet wide, I didn't go out there personally to measure. It tends to make people nervous when they see somebody out there doing that kind of activity. But utilizing those estimates, you can see that twenty feet is far smaller than the thirty-eight feet that would normally be accommodating a bridge. But the existing right of way is to the south, so if you did not go beyond that northern current boundary of the street, it would have no impact on the residents that are on the north, whether they want to park their car there, or have another use for that property. You can do it if you do it completely south of that current northern existing boundary. Something to consider is Broward County, uh, MPO, we take into, uh, areas of equity, and so we have an equity map, and if you look at where the Dania Point and this neighborhood is located, it's in the light blue, which is a medium equity area. The reason why I bring this up is usually when you have an equity area, you tend to take extra steps, uh, to ensure that the community is made whole. These are some recommended additional outreach to do prior to any construction, which would be hold community meetings, uh, before the construction. Uh, also do that before you have design, and also put, start thinking about positive aspects, like maybe naming the bridge after a founder or pillar of the adjacent community. And, uh, definitely hold out, uh, for each of the vendors that are going to either take on the design or the construction to be present, so that way they can get a firsthand experience of what the community is looking for. So in summary, there are many stops, including multiple approvals by the Dania Beach City Commission, as well as even the County Commission for funding for the construction phase. Uh, it is the opinion of our engineer on the MPO staff that no residents need to be displaced. This, um, you can state this requirement into the specifications and make the existing northern road boundary the starting port for construction, and only make improvement south of that northern road boundary. And I am here to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. I'm not sure if anyone of the commission have any question. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Dave, well, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you so getting this technology together here tonight. Uh, thank you so much, Brian, uh, this was very helpful for me as somebody who's a new commissioner and did not have the history on this project. A lot of my concerns were about the displacement of the residents, and I wanted to make sure that that was something that could be put in writing, and that could be part of, um, something that, you know, there's a trust issue sometimes between the cities and the counties, and a lot of times that, you know, we say one thing and then go back and do something else. And the last thing that I would ever want to see is, you know, say, oh, we're not, we, we can say, we can put it as a requirement into the specifications, and then, you know, something go awry and that not happened, so for me, having it in writing and having it, um, you know, as a requirement in the specifications is something, um, that, that was a big concern for me that you answered here tonight. There was something else, do we have any projections, uh, about how that would impact the property values of the homes in that area? Or is that not your area of expertise, such, maybe I should ask Marty?
So, uh, it is expected that there would be a financial impact on the adjacent homes, it would be considered an amenity. Uh, I can't forecast that, but if you look at property values over time, they tend to increase.
Well, I do look forward to seeing you again along with the residents, but I do thank you for, uh, shedding a lot of light on this, uh, issue for me this evening, thank you.
I have a few questions, so thank you for clearing, that twenty years, been there for twenty years, and now that is since 2018, I'm very concerned. Because I was here in 2018, and it was never brought to the community or the commission, um, you know, in an outright way of supporting that project, and it already went through several approval processes to even be at this point. So in 2018, you'd said that staff submitted this project?
Yes, Mayor.
Do you know who in staff submitted this project? Was it community development?
I do not have that information, but I can get that for you.
Or I can ask the city manager. City manager, do you know who submitted this project in 2018?
I don't know, Mayor. I was not here, and none of the department directors that we currently have were actually involved in anything like that, we're not here, but we could certainly find out, I can find out.
Okay, and because, especially because it's going to impact a business, did we reach out, I'll ask Brian, is it something, or is it a practice, that the MPO would reach out to that business entity and see if that was a want, because I heard you mention that this is an amenity, correct, not a necessity?
That is correct. If it were a necessity, it would have already been built.
If it were a necessity, it would have already been built, I just wanted to repeat that, so this is an amenity, not a necessity, and if this is an amenity for the community, I am unsure how the process works kind of backwards, that we would hold community meetings before construction, and community outreach after everything has already been approved. Typically, before there is any construction, before there is any permit, or anything of that nature, of any types of projects that are brought before us, we approve that process here at this level, and staff always directs the developers to make sure and ensure that they are having community meetings, because we say that the community input is important, and, you know, I've seen it time and time again over the years that I've been here, how the community has shown up, how they, you know, even if that community haven't been us on the dais, because we live in those different communities, and so I'm unsure why there would be community outreach before, prior to construction and after an approval from us, is that, was that on us to kind of have those community meetings with you all, to kind of say, if we are approving it, it would then be a blessing from us to give to you?
So the MPO actually just ranks projects and provides them, provides recommendations to Broward County MAP Administration. Ideally, a community meeting would actually be held by the City of Dania Beach, so that way it gathers the legitimacy of the project, but the reason why I suggested prior to construction, also to have prior to design, so that way the people who are doing the work of designing here, the community, will and incorporate that into the design process.
Okay, okay, so, we were supposed to have those community meetings before it was even kind of sent to you. Okay, I know that there is a lot of the community, and a lot of the community is kind of a aging community, and we don't even have our technology together, so I definitely wouldn't expect them to have their technologies together, but we are, we will probably have some people from the community speak at the time of citizens' comments, you don't have to stay there, if you are on and you want to speak, regardless, if you came to speak on this item, I will ask you to wait until citizens' comments, we will be able to have, you will be able to have a direct dialogue on the 27th of September at 6 o'clock at St. Ruth's Missionary Baptist Church, which is located at 145 Northwest Fifth Avenue, and that will be again at 6 o'clock on Monday, September the 27th, at St. Ruth's Missionary Baptist Church, but I am so grateful that you did come, and you will be there again on the 27th, and possibly here again on the 28th, and I just want to thank you for all of your hard work and dedication, and your willingness to answer all of our questions.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Next, we have a resolution. Thank you, Brian, good night.
Thank you.
You can hang around if you want. Go ahead, Tom, Tom, we can't hear you. There you go.
My prefatory statement before we read these resolutions relating to the budget. This announcement is for tonight's budget hearing for the City of Dania Beach, Florida, for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Our operating municipal mileage rate will be 5.9998 mils, which reflects no change from the city's current fiscal year mileage rate. This operating mileage rate represents a 3.64% increase over the rollback rate of 5.7890 mils, as computed in accordance with the provisions of Section 200.065, Paragraph 1, Florida statutes. The voter-approved debt service mileage rate is 0.1441 mils, in accordance with the provisions of law pursuant to Chapter 200, Florida statutes. The city's aggregate or total mileage is 6.1439 mils, which consists of 5.998 mils for operating, and 0.1441 mils for debt service. The final hearing for the budget and the odd-of-long tax mileage will be held on Tuesday, September 28th, at 100 West Dania Beach Boulevard at 7:00 PM, in the City Commission Room in the chambers. First resolution, and each of these are separate public hearings, first resolution is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, as required by the City Charter and Section 200.065, Florida statutes, approving the proposed mileage rate necessary to be levied for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 for operating purposes, establishing the debt mileage rate approved by the electorate, providing for a public hearing, when and where objections may be heard, and questions concerning the same will be answered, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. These are all finance items. This is a separate public hearing.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Three, four?
Next is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, relating to the imposition of fire rescue assessments and provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the City of Dania Beach, Florida, confirming, supplementing, and amending the preliminary rate resolution, and adding a new definition, re-imposing fire rescue assessments with updated assessment rates against assessed property located within the City of Dania Beach for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021. Approving the rates of assessment, approving the final assessment rule, providing for effective adoption of resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date of a hearing.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Make a motion, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed?
Next, the resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, relating to the provision of stormwater management services in the City of Dania Beach, Florida, imposing and re-imposing stormwater assessments against property located within the City of Dania Beach for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, approving the rate of assessment, approving the assessment rule, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date of a hearing.
Make a motion, Mayor.
I have a question, Tom. I keep hearing public hearing, am I supposed to be asking, is there anyone to speak for or against this?
Yes, in case anybody missed the opportunity to do that, we should go back just to make sure we didn't miss somebody, because they should...
Absolutely. Is there someone to speak for or against item 3.3? Or 3.4? Okay, now, 3.5, this is a public hearing, anyone to speak for or against this? Seeing no hands, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Three, six?
Next is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, relating to the provision of solidway service assessments in the City of Dania Beach, Florida, re-imposing solidway service assessments against assessed property located within the boundaries of the City of Dania Beach for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, approving the rate of assessment, approving the assessment rule, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date.
This is a public hearing, anyone to speak for or against this?
Make a motion, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Three, seven?
Last one is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, as required by the City Charter and Section 200.065, Florida statutes, approving a tentative annual budget for the city for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022, providing for a public hearing when objections will be heard, and questions concerning the budget will be answered, right for conflicts, further providing for an effective date.
This is a public hearing, anyone to speak for or against this?
Make a motion, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next, we have proclamations. First one is Suicide Prevention Month, and I know, is Barbara online? Let's see. Yes, she is. She sponsored this item that I will be reading tonight. Whereas the month of September is nationally recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and whereas over 40,000 Americans die by suicide each year, in Florida, a person dies by suicide every two hours on average. Suicides in Florida far outnumber homicides, and whereas suicide is a national epidemic costing the lives 6,000 veterans each year, and is a leading cause of death for first responders, firearms are the leading method of suicide in Florida and the most lethal method. Access to a gun triples the risk of death, and whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death for young people in the United States, every year nearly 3,000 young people die, excuse me, by firearm suicide, and whereas it is critical to recognize the signs of depression that may lead to thoughts of suicide, including speaking about wanting to die, feelings of isolation or hopelessness, increased use of drugs or alcohol, and severe mood swings, and whereas it is critical to recognize the best methods to prevent suicide when a person is in crisis, ask if the person is thinking of taking their life, keep them safe, and remove their access to lethal means such as firearms, poisons, and prescription drugs, and give them professional help. In Florida, dial 211 or the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 1-800-273-8255, or simply text 741741, and whereas the League of Women Voters of Broward County has provided significant leadership in suicide prevention through community education and creation of their Lock It Up Gun Safety Program, and whereas the Florida chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics has provided significant leadership in suicide prevention through community education and programming. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I, Tamara James, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 21st as Suicide Prevention Month in the City of Dania Beach, and enthusiastically support the mission of Lock It Up and the Women, and the League of Women Voters of Broward County Gun Safety Committee, as well as the Florida chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, by encouraging safe storage of firearms and removal of their lethal means to prevent suicide. Thank you, Ms. Barbara, for presenting this, I will have staff mail this to you, and if you would like to say a few words, you're more than welcome to do so.
Well, thank you so much for doing this important proclamation, because education really is the key to helping to prevent suicide, especially by firearm. People don't know that 2/3 of all gun deaths are suicides, so 40,000 gun deaths a year, 2/3 are suicides, and they can be prevented if people will lock up the guns, and, and they can't be afraid to ask a depressed person, are you thinking of harming yourself, are you thinking of taking your life, and you can save a life. It's, you know, people are afraid to talk about it, but it really makes a difference, and especially the locking up the guns, and when they're locked up, they also prevent accidents with kids, and they prevent gun theft. People also don't know that a gun is stolen every 26 minutes in Florida, and that fuels crime, so locking up guns is really the key to reducing crime, preventing suicide, and protecting kids. So thank you very much on behalf of the League and the Florida chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
And please give us your information, can you email your information, where you'd like this proclamation mailed?
Absolutely, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next, we have Hispanic Heritage Month. Is Armand on? I don't think I see him, oh, yes, I do see him. The next, this proclamation regarding Spanish, Hispanic Heritage Month, sorry, reads, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month begins midway in September and ends midway in October. Its roots go back to September 1968, when Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Week to recognize the rich culture and contributions of Americans who traced their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. It was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month always starts on September 15th, a historically significant day that marks the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. The designated period is also a nod to those from Mexico and Chile, which celebrate their independence on September 16th and September 18th, respectively. Also, Columbus Day, or Dia de la Raza, which is October 12th falls within this 30-day period, and whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the Hispanic population of the U.S. as of July 1st, 2019, was 60.6 million, making people of Hispanic origin the nation's largest ethnic or racial minority. Hispanics constitute 18.5% of the nation's total population, states with a population of 1 million or more Hispanic residents in 2019, where Arizona, California, Colorado, Florida, Georgia, Illinois, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, and Texas, and whereas in Dania Beach, the U.S. Census Bureau lists its 2020 population as being 32,417, with our Hispanic or Latino population estimated at 11,223, or 35%. And whereas Hispanics have had a profound, significant, and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, they have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. Now therefore, on behalf of the City of Dania Beach, I, Tamara James, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2021 through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Dania Beach, and especially recognize Latino Ensemble Inc., a performing arts organization based in Dania Beach, whose artistic producing director is Jose Armand, and encourage all citizens of Dania Beach to join in learning about and celebrating the vast contributions Hispanics have made to the world, to our country, and our community. Jose, thank you for working with Tom and myself, and constantly being an ear and advocate for the Hispanic community, and I know you want to say a few words, and at the end, if you could send an email where you would want this proclamation mailed, we'll be sure to do so.
Thank you, Mayor James, for this incredible honor, deeply appreciative. I'd like to just mention that Latino Ensemble Inc. had its beginning in Los Angeles during the 1980s. It collaborated with the local theatrical organizations in the rich, vast, multicultural panoply that was Los Angeles in the 80s and 90s. The company culminated its run with that theatrical production at FAU's Wertheim Performing Arts Center in 2000. It has now resurfaced as a Florida domestic nonprofit housed in Dania Beach, quixotic in its mission to showcase the performing arts at daring and non-traditional venues. We pledge to continue highlighting our community involvement in both the arts and as a local organizing entity advocating diversity and equity in the arts. So thank you again from the bottom of my heart, it's an honor, and hope we can make you proud.
Thank you so much, Jose. Next, we have citizens' comments. If you are part of our participants on the panel, if you would like to speak, if you would kindly use your raise the hand tool, I do have two that have signed up prior to the meeting, so I will start with those two. Anyone else who wishes to speak, please raise your hand, and you would be recognized, and you will have three minutes to do so. First, we have Garob Utani. If you are online, if you could use the raise your hand tool, because I do not see you. Okay, I have to see you now, go on. Okay, can you start your video? No. Okay, so while we're waiting on him, I guess we'll go with Pastor Paul Wiggins. Or Reverend Paul Wiggins, I apologize. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
I'm Reverend Paul Wiggins, three twenty-one Southeast Third Street. Mayor James, Vice Mayor Marco Salvino, Commissioners, Staff, and all who are on the line tonight. Thank you for this opportunity. I believe I heard what I needed to hear relative to the bridge when it was stated that it is not a necessity, or it would have already been built. So, you know, my concern is that it has been elevated to this commission meeting prior to getting the input from people who will be negatively or positively impacted. So I was glad to hear that tonight. And I simply want to say that we have to keep community involved in whatever we're doing. And I look forward to the meeting on the twenty seventh to have some more in-depth discussion regarding that bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have Mr. Butany on the line. You have to unmute first. There you go.
Hello.
Please state your name and address for the record, and then I have a question before you start.
Sure. It's Garav Butany, P three Real Estate, twenty four fifty one Brickell Avenue, Miami, Florida.
Okay, I want to ask our city attorney first. I have two requests to address here, and they seem to both maybe have a proposal that is with the Dania Beach Grill. Is it okay for them to speak or no? You're muted, Tom.
I believe the manager has on her comments tonight report on what she proposes and recommends as to the Dania Beach Grill. So they can speak, but at this point, this is still hasn't come before you for formal action. So it's still in a cone of silence, so we really can't address back to them.
Okay, so we can just listen to what they have to say.
That's correct.
Awesome. Go ahead, Mr. Butany.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Well, you know, a little over three months ago, we were asked that the City of Dania Beach is looking for a game changer on the site of the former Dania Beach Grill. When we saw the site, we immediately realized the massive potential it to be a creative change agent, not only for the ocean park revitalization, but also for the City of Dania Beach. Also, it's a matter of great responsibility because this will have a lasting impact on the city for the next fifty to sixty years or even more. So we went about to put a world-class team with the James Beard Award-winning chef, who has created some of the most important restaurants in the country. We brought on one of the best local architects to conceptualize the site plan. We put in the best practices of environmental, social governance that will be vitally important for the city's future. And additionally, upon being made aware of a workshop that was held in two thousand and nineteen by the City Commission for the Dania Beach Grill, we saw the passion of the local community. And which was, there was a sentiment, there was a line by then, the Vice Mayor Lauren Odoman. She said, this is an issue of history and emotion because it's been there since the nineteen forties. So we went back to the drawing board. We created the Dania Beach Grill alongside this culinary masterpiece that we had reconceptualized. So it created a truly authentic Dania Beach concept. We also brought on Kathleen Kaufman. She's just been appointed as a member of the five-member Historical Commission, Florida, Florida Historical Commission by Governor DeSantis. You know, she gave us vital input how to create this lovely historical thing that's been in the memories of Dania Beach and created alongside this lovely futuristic concept that we have. We, you know, we proposed, given the successes that we've had in the past, we also kind of created a generous revenue model for the city and tax income. However, at the end of the day, and even though we were applauded for going through the lens of creating this fantastic game-changing concept that would be truly unique, transformative for Dania Beach, we were extremely disappointed that during the selection process, in the final selection process, we were largely ignored, and none of these things were brought to light. You know, all the work that we did and all this concept that we've created, which we feel so strongly about. So all we would like to request the City Commission and the, you know, and the other officials to give us a chance at the table to make our presentation in full because a lot rides on this project. And I think it's vitally important, and we feel that if we are selected, we'll make everybody so proud. So, you know, give us the chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kaufman?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. It's Kathleen Kaufman. I'm at twenty-six sixteen Northwest Twenty-Fifth Place in Gainesville, Florida. And I just wanted to, again, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for considering these items. I think it's a wonderful thing for the Dania Beach community because obviously there are a lot of people very upset about the loss of that kind of community. The grill was basically a community center. It acted as such, and it really brought people together. So I just wanted to encourage you, as you move forward through this selection process, to really think about the kind of team that would be working with you. Obviously, your financial impact is going to be important to you, and what the city is going to be able to get out of it is a very high priority also. But, you know, just, I encourage you to make sure that the team you select has the experience, a breadth of experience, and that they have a passion for what they do. Yes, I'm a historic preservationist and consultant, but I have worked with so many diverse communities in the past that many large-scale developers hire me as their preservation consultant in order to help them figure out ways to put in projects into a community that not only reflects the community character, but is something that works with the community members as well. Because you want something that really is, you may not want to totally recreate Dania Beach Grill as it was, but you certainly want to be able to have some aspect of the new project reflect the history of that facility and what it meant to the community. Just a little bit of, I know I don't have much time. So I would just like to say to you, at our interview with the committee meeting, we were asked, well, why don't you have a menu and a full design? I think anybody that comes at you already with a preconceived menu and design for the building is coming at it way too prematurely. You want to be able to work with the people, residents, and the members of the elected officials to really come up with a design that's going to work for you. It shouldn't be about what we want or what we perceive. And that's all I have to say about that. I'd be happy to answer any questions about my experience, but I know it was only a three-minute thing, so.
Well, we are prohibited from answering any questions.
Oh, that's right.
Go ahead, Tom.
I just wanted to point out to the commission, the only reason they've been permitted to address you is that this matter is coming to the commission under the manager's comments, and that would be the thing that opens the door for communication. She hasn't had that yet, but we anticipate she's going to do that with you. That's why the cone of silence would extend to allow these people to address you, but I don't recommend you respond to them.
No, no, understood, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. I did see two other hands up, but they kind of disappeared. I'm going to call their names anyway, and if they want to speak. Oh, sorry. They're more than welcome to. The first was former Mayor Bobby H. Grace.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Bobby Grace, one ten Northwest Eighth Avenue in the great city of Dania Beach. First of all, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, elected officials, for the City of Dania Beach. I want to address some of the concerns that I have about the bridge that has been proposed. I was sitting on that commission in two thousand and eighteen, and nothing came across my desk or anything concerning them wanting to build that bridge. I am glad that we're going to be having the dialogue that we're going to be having on the twenty seventh at Saint Ruth Missionary Baptist Church. We have an organization in place now that we were expecting to expand that community by building new homes in that area. And we don't want the residents or the developers or the people that own the properties to be disinfectized by us going out and putting another bridge in. We do have a bridge on Northwest First, and I believe we do have one on Sterling Road. So this concerns me a lot, and I would like for Brian, when he addresses us, to make sure that he let us know who from the City of Dania Beach asks him to put in perspective that they wanted to have that bridge. I'm also going to be reaching out to my county commissioners stating that we're going to be having this meeting in that a lot of the residents are not going to be happy with this bridge coming through the neighborhood. We're happy with the way we are right now. I think that we don't need three bridges right close to each other. And I'm hoping and praying that the commission in general will see the needs of the residents of the City of Dania Beach in the northwest section, that they will be able to understand like they have understood in other areas of the City of Dania Beach. When the residents speak, they should listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gloria Black? Let me see if I can put you on screen here. I don't, I can't. Ms. Gloria Black, are you there? There you go. I can see you now. Okay, do you have audio? I don't know what happened. Oh, where'd she go? Okay. I see you, but we cannot hear you. Are you signed up? Are you connected to audio? I can't, I can't. We're going to come back to you. Maybe you can get your daughter or someone to help you with the audio, because I can't hear you. We'll go to Mr. Mike Lally. We'll start your video and unmute you. All right. We can't hear you yet. Hold on, it's asking to unmute. There you go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Davis Luellen, and Commissioner Odoman. As you know, I own the Wave Project, both at ninety North Bryan Road and seventy South Bryan Road. And just to remind you all, back in two thousand and one or two thousand and two, I actually deeded to the City of Dania Beach upon their request land for a bridge. That was in two thousand and two, and there's never been a bridge. And one of the concerns I have is that when we got approval for my project last January, the city had asked me about a use for that property. I donated the money and resources to put in a park for the community and a boardwalk. And I feel that putting a bridge in there, my engineers, who I paid money to do traffic studies, said it doesn't warrant putting another bridge in, and that's Kim Lee Horn. And they did the work for the Dania Point Project as well. So I'm not an advocate of putting a bridge in when there's no traffic that warrants it or would have benefited the community to the east of me. And it would also affect, I think, the neighbors over there because the boardwalk is going to be publicly accessible from Northwest First Street to Sterling Road, as you all approved when we had this hearing. So I'd like to at least make the point right now, unless the county has other issues there, if it's not needed, and you have one at Northwest First Street and Sterling Road, and there's no traffic impact that's negative, why we need to proceed with that? And I would adamantly protest that bridge going in. I still want to start putting the park in as soon as possible. I did meet with Commissioner Ryan last May and told him we'd like to get going with it, and they own the property to the south of you all. I said, look, I want to put the park in and get started because I have trees on my site that would be enhancement. And of course, nothing's happened, and I'm getting frustrated. I will be submitting plans for my project at ninety Wave either this week or next week for the thirty-three percent for foundations. So I'm moving along, and I'd like to get this issue with the bridge sort of brought to a head, or at least if the neighbors really don't want the bridge, I want to support them in that same capacity. That's my feeling.
Thank you, Mr. Lally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Black, we're going to try again. I don't even see audio for you. I'm unsure if that's going to work. You have to connect to audio first. I'll go with Mrs. Ivy. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Hold on, hold on now. You have to unmute.
Unmute, is that it? Can you hear me now?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Ivy Cure, two zero nine Northwest Fourteenth Court, Dania Beach, Florida. And my concern is about the bridge they're talking about building on Dania Beach Boulevard. My main concern is the kids in the area playing in the area in the traffic, the excessive traffic that would be going back and forth. In fact, my grandkids live right on the particular corner of Dania Beach Boulevard, I think it's Fourteenth Ave. And not only my grandkids, quite a few kids are in the area, quite a few, a lot, matter of fact. And it really wouldn't be safe to have a bridge come through with heavier traffic, should I say, coming through the residential neighborhood for the kids playing on the bicycles and even outside playing football or what have you. So that's my main concern, is the safety of our children. And if no one is concerned about the safety of our children, then it's just a total shame, total. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gloria, I'm unsure of how to help you. I guess we'll wait to hear from you at the community meeting on the twenty seventh because I don't see an option to even unmute you for audio. And so is there anyone else that wishes to speak during citizens' comments? Not, we will move along to our public safety reports at the marks. It looks like you're unmuted. But I can't hear you. No, we still can't hear you. Can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Maybe you try to log on and log off. We'll go to, we'll go to Chief Pelisar and then try to come back to you. I see your lips moving, but I can't read them. Chief Pelisar, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and the great citizens of Dania Beach. I'd like to start off by letting you guys know that on Rescue Seventeen, we just ordered- Commissioners, City Manager, and the great citizens of Daniel Beach. Uh, I'd like to start off by letting you guys know that, uh, on Rescue Seventeen, we just, uh, ordered a new structure system, which is gonna help our firefighters be able to load and unload the patients, uh, on the rescue. It's an automatic system, so it's gonna, uh, help them as far as loading, uh, the patients and, uh, make it a lot safer for both the patient a- and and our firefighter. So that's gonna be a great add-on for our Rescue Seventeen. Also, this, uh, last, uh, you know, in, uh, this year, we've, uh, have two thousand seven hundred and nineteen total inspectable, uh, buildings, uh, and so far we've completed two, uh, two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight, meaning that we're, uh, a little bit, uh, close to, uh, ninety-eight and a half percent, um, being completed. So by the end of this month, we'll be a hundred percent complete in our, uh, fire inspections. Uh, so our inspection department is doing a great job and I, I like to commend them for that. From the, uh, beginning of August first through the end of Au- uh, through August thirty-first, um, our station units, Station One, Station Seventeen, they ran seven hundred and ninety-three total calls. So, uh, usually when I report to you, I report to you the last thirty days, but I'm gonna start doing now, just reporting you the month before so that we get very accurate numbers. So they ran seven hundred and ninety-three calls. Of those calls, six hundred and forty-one were rescue calls. Sixty-seven, uh, of those calls were service calls, which means basically somebody calls, uh, they, uh, they fell and they need help back up. We go there and help them for, to do that. We had eighty-five, uh, total fire calls, meaning that we either responded to some, uh, some kind of fire, whether it be a little brush fire or a major boat fire like we, uh, recently had. So, um, that was between August first and August thirty-first. Uh, and, um, that's pretty much it, uh, for, for my report. I would like to take a personal moment to say thank you to the city manager and the commission because I've, uh, recently completed two years of serving you. And, um, you know, it's been one of the best two years of my life as far as getting, being able to get work done. I promised, uh, to live by a simple motto, which is, I'm not here for me, I'm not here for we, I'm here for them. And by them, I mean the citizens of Daniel Beach, uh, my coworkers, the firefighters, and trying to make everything better for everybody I, I touch and come in contact with around the city. So, um, I thank you all for allowing me to accomplish that goal because without your support, uh, it wouldn't be possible. So thank you very much.
And thank you. We certainly are blessed to have you as well. Any remarks, comments, or no questions? All right. Thank you, Chief. We're gonna try to move back to Captain Marks.
I spoke with him, he's working on it.
Okay. Okay. Well, maybe we'll do the consent agenda and then come back since we have that next. We have the consent agenda. Do we have any polls other than seven point two? What do we have?
Make a motion to approve with the exception of seven point two.
Seven point two. Put this on here. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Tom, do you have to read this? You're, you're muted.
It's a request from the city manager to attend the ICMA twenty twenty-one annual conference at the Oregon Convention Center in Portland, Oregon from October one to October seventh, estimated cost of three thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars, eighty cents.
Thank you, Mayor. As I sent you an email today, um, the more that I did my research and the more that I looked at this and since we have an opportunity to do it virtually, I am exercising the opportunity to do it virtually. Um, I would have laughed if it had gone. It's a city I've never been to. It's a city that's doing some amazing things. Matter, matter of fact, I have my cousin, who's a director of public services for the city of Salem. Um, but at this time, due to COVID and everything else, other concerns that I explained to you, I will be attending the conference virtually. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I don't think we need a motion in a second for that.
So we will move on to, oh wait, we'll wait to see if Chief Captain Marks is back. Frank, did we get him back?
He's, I'm, I'm chatting with him. He still can't get in. I'm not sure what, he's having an issue with the code he's trying to use.
Okay. Well, just let us know when he's back and then I'll add him on in wherever we are.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next item are the bids and requests for proposals. We have one, item eight point one.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Daniel Beach, Florida, authorizing the proper city officials to award a bid to U.S. Water Services Corporation and to execute an agreement for services. Right for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, a finance item.
Do we have any dialogue amongst the commission? If not, do we have a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Onto our public hearings, nine point one.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Daniel Beach, Florida, amending Chapter Six entitled Beaches, Parks, Waterways and Recreation, Article One entitled in general to create Section six dash twenty-five entitled designated child play areas pertaining to the safety and welfare of children playing in the city parks, ready for conflicts, ready for severability, further providing for an effective date, second reading, uh, a Parks and Recreation item.
Excuse me, Mayor James. Captain Marks is in.
Yes.
Captain Marks is in on telephone. If you wanted to let him do his report before we get to the public hearings.
Well, we're gonna finish
Okay. Well, I don't think this one is a long one, so we'll just finish this one and then go right to, um, eight, nine, nine point one. Um, this is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this?
Motion, Mayor, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Captain Marks, floor is yours.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Sorry, I'm not on video. I tried, we tried a bunch of times. Um, since the last commission meeting, we've responded to the, the following crimes. Three aggravated assaults, one aggravated battery, four auto thefts, one burglary business, ten burglary conveyances, three burglary residences, one robbery, and, uh, ten thefts. We've seen a decrease of two burglary conveyances, one burglary residence, and a decrease of five thefts. Since the beginning of the year in January, we've responded to twenty-five thousand six hundred twenty-one calls for service. Since the last commission meeting, we've made fifty-eight arrests. Our crime suppression team has recovered three stolen vehicles resulting in two arrests. We've had three firearm-related arrests. In one of them, it was revealed that the, uh, one of the guns was reported stolen. We made a total of seven arrests, six of which were felonies. We seized a hundred two grams of oxycodone, five grams of crack, and three grams of heroin. We also executed one search warrant. Our Criminal Investigations Division had a burglary business at the nine-one-one food store on Daniel Beach Boulevard, where the suspect attempted to gain entry into the side door of the closed business. He was subsequently stopped by responding deputies who were responding to the alarm. They also had a, a burglary conveyance where the victim posted a Ring video on, uh, the Ring website and it showed the, the suspect attempting to burglarize the vehicle. We made a, an alert flyer and the suspect was identified through that flyer and was arrested. We had an LPR, which is the license plate readers. We had a hit that occurred in reference to a vehicle traveling westbound on Griffin Road. It was listed stolen out of Miami-Dade County. We conducted a traffic stop and two suspects were arrested and charged with, uh, possession of stolen vehicle. We had a theft where a suspect stole seven hundred dollars from a victim while staying at the roadway end located at twenty-four forty State Road eighty-four. An arrest warrant was obtained on seven twenty-one twenty-one and the suspect was arrested shortly thereafter. We also had a theft where a suspect stole a duffel bag from the victim, which was staying at the Super Eight Motel at three-three-three Federal Highway. The suspect attempted to make the victim pay in order to get his property back and we arrested him and he confessed the crime. Our traffic unit continued enforcement and education for the school zones along Southeast Fifth Ave. And we continued our operation and Operation Safe Streets and Crash Prevention, which resulted in two hundred and ninety-seven citations, six driving while licensed suspended arrests, and seven total arrests. Our homeless outreach deputies continue to address the transient traffic that passes through the city and clear intersections of any panhandling. We've had a couple of success stories. One of which, our homeless outreach deputies encountered a homeless transient a little over a month ago. He was never accounted for in our at-large Daniel population as he roams between Daniel and Hollendale. After determining his needs and what resources could best benefit him, we began the process of admitting him to a assisted living facility. After assisting with transportation for his COVID testing and vaccinations, he was successfully processed and admitted on Tuesday. And that large client, who adamantly declined any sort of assistance from us for years, has finally agreed to assistance. Due to zero income benefits and healthcare, this process will unfortunately be a bit longer. Adult Protective Services was contacted and the case manager's been, been assigned to him. Our homeless outreach deputies are working closely with the case manager to expedite financial Medicaid assistance in order for him to be accepted to a facility that will better fit his needs. We anticipate this process to take a few more weeks. Approximately one month ago or so, you may recall that our homicide unit re- received information that human remains may be buried in a backyard at a residence in West Daniel Beach. After days of digging, remains were finally located. Based on witness statements, evidence from the skeletal remains and DNA results, homicide investigators believe that the suspect shot and killed her brother sometime in May of two thousand and fourteen. They believe she shot the victim at a home in Hollywood and buried his body at the West Daniel Beach location where the remains were recovered. The motive for the killing remains under investigation. That completes my report.
Um, Commissioner Luella?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief, I just had a, a quick question. You said that there was a, a robbery of some sort at the roadway end, correct?
Yes.
Was that still involving the same, um, individuals that were there with the vouchers for the homeless?
That's unknown at this time, ma'am.
Okay. So it's just, it could just be a random, um, crime as opposed to
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
And I, and I do, um, want to, um, make sure I, I tell you all that I have noticed the increased, uh, presence during the school times. And, um, I, I feel like, you know, my son being out there at the bus stops is safer, um, because there, there is a larger police presence. So I just want to thank you for your quick response and for your officers for keeping our, our streets safe, especially during schools on times.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And we'll go back to our public hearings. Have a good evening. Nine point two.
Nine two and nine three are related, so I'll read them together, but you will vote on them separately. These are called quasi-judicial hearings. So, uh, anybody that's gonna speak, uh, on behalf of them will have to be sworn in. There are also Jennings disclosures where if you've been contacted by any way of either for or against, you would disclose that at this hearing. Nine-two is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Daniel Beach, Florida, approving the site plan SP forty-six twenty-one submitted by Spirit Airlines for the property generally located south of North Marine, Mariner Street, west of Bryan Road, north of Radiant Drive, and east of Waypoint Avenue within the city of Daniel Beach, Florida, as legally described in Exhibit A called the property. A copy which is attached to this resolution, right for conditions, right for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. And the related resolution is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Daniel Beach, Florida, approving the site plan SP forty-seven twenty-one submitted by Spirit Airlines for the property generally located south of Meridian Drive, west of Bryan Road, north and south Berry Street, and east of Atlas Lane within the city of Daniel Beach, Florida, as legally described in Exhibit A, the property, a copy which is attached to this resolution. Ready for conditions, ready for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. These are community development matters. Our Corinne, if you can swear you in. Where from testimony, you'll give the truth, hold the month, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Not you, Dennis, you don't count. Sorry about that, Dennis.
It's okay.
All right, Corinne.
Thank you. Um, good evening. Corinne LaJoy, Assistant Director on Community Development. And I am going to try sharing my screen quickly so I can get, um, I can start my presentation. Let's see. Sorry about that. Okay. Um, okay. Thank you for your patience. Um, so this, I'm going to make the presentation for both items at one time. Um, and I know the applicant has a presentation as well, so I'll try to be brief. Um, as Tom said, this is a site plan for Spirit Airlines. They're proposing an office, training center, parking garage as part of their corporate campus, and they're also proposing a residential building that they'll utilize as part of their, um, you know, onsite training. The property itself is located in Daniel Point, which is zoned, uh, planned mixed-use development. It's in the Regional Activity Center, and they're proposing to build on vacant parcels. The site plan, I'm sorry, the headquarters for the office building did come through and was previously approved December in two thousand and nineteen. Um, but significant changes have been made to that site plan since then. Um, one of which is the building is now lower, the fewer floors than was originally proposed. And the residential building hadn't come in as part of that original site plan, so we, um, are kind of starting over with brand new site plan review and approval tonight. The applicant is proposing the construction of the following. Um, a six-story, one hundred and eighty thousand square foot office building, and this is the building that's intended to function as the headquarters for the Spirit Airlines. They're proposing a ten thousand square foot simulation training facility for ongoing training of their employees. They are proposing a almost one thousand parking space garage as well as two hundred residential units with three hundred and one parking spaces to be used as their corporate housing. Um, when they train their employees, they'll be able to house them onsite or in close proximity to that corporate campus. In addition, they are also asking for multiple, um, signs for project identification. That includes five wall signs, three different monument signs, as well as a painted roof sign on the, um, simulation training building. This is something that they've provided little details because it's something they're still trying to flush out on their side. Um, but we have expressed the desire that the city, um, logo be included in that sign. In addition, um, there was a lot of discussion amongst the traffic engineers regarding traffic and, um, at what point would a traffic light be warranted at Old Griffin and Bryan Road? And Daniel Point has agreed to submit a signal warrant study to Broward County no later than six months after the Spirit Headquarters, um, facility is on, in operation in order to determine if traffic signal is warranted at that intersection. So, um, the thought is that perhaps once, that, once that headquarters is built and fully occupied, that we might finally um, hit those triggers and warrant that, that traffic light. So they agreed to look at that at the sixth, at least at the six, six-month mark. Okay. So this is the, um, corporate campus site plan. You can see the parking garage. This is the office headquarters. And then the simulation building is, um, furthest to the east and all the way to the east would be Bryan Road. Just to give you some orientation. Um, as part of the site plan, they are proposing an alternative parking standard with regards to the, um, a corporate campus. The development design guidelines that regulate development in Daniel Point requires one thousand one hundred and thirty-two parking spaces for that, um, headquarters campus. If you follow the Land Development Code, nine hundred and forty-four parking spaces would be required. The applicant is proposing an alternative parking standard, um, providing one thousand ninety-eight parking spaces. And they've been able to provide that analysis as part of their submittal and, um, approval of this alternative parking standard um, would go with the site plan. So if the site plan's approved tonight, so would the alternative parking standard. Another thing that they're asking for is the use of the city logo. The applicant has provided detail of the proposed construction fence, screen Another thing that they're asking for is the use of the city logo. The applicant has provided detail of the proposed construction fence screening that is required by code awardances. And one of the graphics that they're proposing to use is the city logo. And that requires City Commission approval as well. So we're wrapping that into the site plan approval also. The, they did do community outreach at the request of staff on August nineteenth. They met their applicant and several of their consultants were able to make a presentation to the attendees who were residents in the area as well as business members. The adjacent Bryan International Commerce Center identified support of the project. And they answered any questions at that meeting as well. This is the, kind of, the, a view of the corporate campus. So the parking garage is to the left. The office complex is the tallest of the buildings. That's in the center. And then the training facility and the simulation building is further to the east. And as I said before, to the far east would be Bryan Road. At the bottom shows what the screening of that construction fence would look like. And you can see the Dania Beach logo is in the corner as well. To, with regards to impact fees for the project, as we know, we do have a public art impact fee. For this project, they would be required to provide two thousand five hundred thousand dollars into the public art fund if they did the payment in whole. And that's for each of the site plans. Alternatively, they could hold half of that, one hundred and twenty-five thousand for art installation and pay the remainder into the fund as well. And again, that's for each site plan for the headquarters complex and for the residential building. With regards to the traffic impacts, they would have to pay eight thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-two cents for the impact fees for the corporate headquarters complex and one thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars for the residential building. And for the recreation and open space, it would be required for that residential building because it has that residential component, and that would be two hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred dollars to enter the parks and recreation fee. The, both projects did go through the Development Review Committee in July of this year, this past summer. As we know, the DRC includes personnel from VSO Fire, Public Services, the city's landscape consultant, Community Development Planning Division. The applicant does have some outstanding comments to address. They've identified and met all the critical criteria and critical comments. So the remainder are identified in the staff report and in the resolution. So there'll be conditions of approval that'll have to be addressed prior to the issuance of the permit. This is another kind of rendering of that corporate complex with the headquarters office complex in the center. And this is the lower profile. This is the newer building, but that is not as tall as originally proposed in the old site plan. And this is a view of, oops, I'm going too fast. This is a view of just the simulation training facility building. This is the building that fronts on Bryan Road. This is the office complex, and you can see that has like an outdoor terrace on the top, upper levels. And the parking garage is in the background. This is a kind of an elevation of that garage. And you can see it's in their corporate colors. And this is the residential building that would be built also fronting on Bryan Road, including the corporate colors as well. At this time, staff's recommending approval of the use of the city's of Dania Beach logo and the site plan resolutions for both the Spirit corporate campus as well as the residential buildings with the remaining DRC comments as conditions of approval. And I'm available if you have any questions, but I know the applicant is present as well and has a presentation to make as well.
Thank you. I don't see anyone's hands raised other than Mr. Mealy, but I only have one question, Corinne. When we give them approval to use our logo, is their staff or someone that is going to confirm that it is they're using the Dania Beach standards for the logo?
Well, yes, it would be used as presented in that screening. So that's the authorization for the logo at the time, at the moment. It's as reflected in that screening that they proposed.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I took a short, brief moment, so I didn't see that part, but Commissioner Davis?
No, just along with that, I think you said that you requested permission for them to use the logo on the rooftop as well for one of their, is that going to be on the corporate campus or the training facility?
Where the rooftop signage is currently identified is on the corporate campus on top of the training and simulation building. But I know the applicant's going to discuss that because they haven't provided us any renderings to show us what that looks like because I think the conversations that we've had with them today was that there, that hasn't been finalized yet, and they're still working through those details.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mealy?
Thank you. Dennis Mealy, two hundred East Broward Boulevard for Lauderdale on behalf of the applicant. Ms. LaJoy has already shown a lot of the drawings or pictures that we were going to show, so we'll kind of zero in on the questions that were asked. So, Michael, could you go to slide number five, please? Okay, so you see here, this is the drawing that shows the corporate headquarters where that is labeled office building. That's the headquarters building. You see the parking garage, and then you see the simulation training building. Just for a point of reference, the office building when it was originally approved was nine floors. It's now six. So it's a lower height building. We think that'll, you know, even fit in better than the taller one would have. Now, you see on the simulation building at the kind of upper, the northern part of it, you see a little dotted line rectangle. That's the area where we're thinking about putting our spirit logo. It would actually, the concept is if you're flying into the airport and you look out the window, you'd see it. And so we've been asked if we could also have a location for the Dania Beach logo on that same roof. We're still, you know, this is something that was brought to my attention on Friday. I've talked to the folks at Spirit about it. And we obviously need more detail to figure out how to do it. At this point, we're not even sure we're going to put our logo on there. But we'll be happy to work with the staff to figure out a way to see if this could be done. But I don't have any details on that this evening. And then the diagrams of the buildings, Corinne has already showed you all of those. So I think other than that, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. We're very excited. Spirit Airlines is very excited about making Dania Beach the new home for their headquarters. The training building, the simulator is obviously very important for the pilots and the crew to be up to date on all the latest technology and equipment. And then the residential is something we're very excited about doing so that when our people come here for these training sessions and other corporate activities, they can stay nearby and use our facilities to their best ability for the company and for the city. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mealy? I think something that would be amazing to see would possibly, if you wanted to use our logo, to paint it on the top of the building. So, you know, and maybe even Spirit, we're talking about aviation, we're talking about people flying in to be able to see it as you're flying. I think that would, that would be sufficient for my liking. I'm not sure about the rest of the commissioners, but is that an option?
Well, I think that's what we've been asked, is can we put on the roof of this building the Dania Beach logo? And I think that that's something that, as I mentioned, was brought up to us on Friday. We're working on it. We'll continue to work on it with your staff, and we're hoping that if something can be done. I just don't know enough tonight to be able to say it for sure. You know, Spirit is a big company. There's a lot of people that have to weigh in on decisions they make. This seems like a pretty small one to me. But, you know, we'll continue to work on it, and hopefully we'll be able to make it work for you.
Okay, I was missing, I missed turn to stood you. I wasn't thinking that you were talking about painting it. I thought you were talking about it kind of being like a vertical thing, but so I'm sorry for that repeated question.
Well, let me say this, that whatever a method we would use to put the spirit sign on the roof, you know, whether it's paint or whatever it is, the same method would be used for the Dania Beach logo if it goes up there. I don't, I'm not a sign expert, but I'm guessing it's probably a pretty straightforward application of something onto the building.
Awesome. I'm certainly excited for Spirit Airlines, their headquarters, to be housed here in Dania Beach. And I am thankful for the outreach and the support that you've gotten, both from the staff, the commission, and the community. Commissioner Luella?
I just wanted to add on that, that, you know, even if it, I'm thinking maybe you all might want to chime in on this, even if, like if we don't have our logo right next to where it says Spirit, maybe on one of the other buildings might be good.
Yeah, sure. It doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be right on the same one. Like it could be on the office building or be even on the parking garage. There might be a way to do that. So, just a thought. Anyway.
It's good to have flexibility.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. So we'll do these one by one. We will start with nine point two. This is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this?
Make the motion, pass the item, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, nine point three. This is a public hearing. Tom, did you already read that?
I did.
Yes. Anyone to speak for or against this?
Make the motion, pass the item, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great. I don't know how to fill this eight forty-four. We're on discussion of possible actions. The first item on discussion of possible actions would be the grant policy, the grant and donations policy. It's placed here by the Director of Finance, Frank. I mean, the only thing that I, the only discussion that I have with this is I've received a lot of phone calls and communications with people who were unaware that we were going to fund organizations this year. And, you know, speaking about the unfairness of it and had they known, they would have applied. And I do kind of agree. Especially now that we are going to have a policy that maybe we should wait till next year to reward. You can go through a process that we can all stand by, something that is being presented to us for us to adopt or change or deny or whatever it is. But this is just my two cents. I wouldn't support giving any of the organizations funding this year other than what we always funded. And I think that is the Chris Hickson Scholarship. Just because it, we did not go out and advertise for it, and it hasn't, it wasn't transparent because we didn't have a process for it anyway. You know, we didn't say, we didn't know that we were going to fund it and decide that. So that's my contribution to the discussion. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Okay, so what we're doing is we're going to table basically the grant donation policy for the year. I'm sorry. You're going to, you're going to table the grant donation policy for this year is what you're saying, correct? Except for the one you?
Except for the Chris Hickson Foundation that we've, we've, that's, that would be my, that's what I would want to do, just to make it a fair process for everyone else that wanted to apply for it.
Can we, can I ask you a question? Is there, I know that this is something that we've done, you know, back as far as I can remember. And I know that taxpayers money is tough to give away, and everybody's going to, you know, they want to do it. It's just something we just can't work on a little bit longer and see how we can work it out to where, you know, certain, I know we talked about everybody getting a little bit of something to pick on their favorite type of thing and that having to submit. And whether we all get six of us and we can break it down to six components and so on. I mean, it's just, it's either, you know, we either just don't do it, other than what you said for this year, and we just completely don't do it ever. Or we have to come up with a long-term policy that's going to work for everybody. So, you know, in the future as well. So, I mean, I agree with table on it right now and so on, but I think maybe we should come to, you know, the next three or four months, maybe come up with suggestions or something.
Well, we have a guideline draft that was given to us.
Oh, I didn't see it.
Oh, it was in the backup, but we have a
Exactly. I do have a folder here from
The backup would be way thicker than that folder.
Okay. It says twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
We have a guideline draft.
All right. Okay, I'll review it. I'll go back and think, Mayor.
Okay, so Commissioner Luella?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, there is the guideline in there, and I are probably going to have to discuss it in some detail at some point as to what, or not, maybe not. As far as what we agree with, what we don't agree with, if we need to make any changes. Kind of like we did with policies and procedures in the past for other things. Can you hear me or no? Okay, I'm just thinking like what we've done in the past with policies and procedures and other things. It might be a matter of us basically sitting down with our one-on-one meetings to discuss it and going through it, and then maybe coming back to approve or whatever we're going to do with it. I'm a little hesitant to say that we fund anything at all because we also used to fund, we've always funded the library every year as well. So then you're, now you're picking two things that we funded every year that I just kind of feel like if we're not going to fund anything, we just don't fund anything this year. And hold off until next year's budget, and then we deal with it at that time. As opposed to picking and choosing, and that's all.
Yes, so I agree. That's why I said the only, only one that we have consistently funded, even when we weren't funding, we did. We funded the library, but she said they didn't need funding this year. She said that at the last commission meeting. We can reach back out to them and see if they needed it. I wouldn't be opposed to giving who we've consistently given the same amounts to. But as far as additional, although I love, I love, you know, nonprofit organizations for giving to additional organizations because we don't have, we didn't have this in place. And, you know, we kind of just looked at it and say, oh, well, five applied. Let's give this a five. I think we need to do it in a more, a better manner, or a more effective and efficient manner. That's my opinion, so I agree with you on that. And I would agree, maybe as far as just the program, now that we all know that we have it in our backups and everything, to have one-on-one meetings with the city manager along with Frank from Finance to make sure we can go over any of our concerns that concern us on the program. And then at the next meeting, he can bring just the program, not if we're going to fund any programs or not, but just the program so that we'll know when there is time for organizations to apply for it, then we'll already have those measures in place. Commissioner Hartman?
No, nothing. I was just going to say, do we need a motion for this since we all seem to agree that we're not going to, that we're going to talk with Frank and he'll come back with something. Do we need a motion for it?
I didn't hear your last part. You're really muffled and low.
Do we need a motion to move forward since we all say we're not going to do anything with it right now?
Okay, so I guess I'll ask, are we all okay with only funding the library and the Chris Hickson Foundation for this year? And going back to the board to get the necessary program and structure together for next year?
I thought you just said the library said they didn't need money.
Yeah, they did.
They did. I mean, I'm okay with not giving them the money, but I also wanted to honor what Commissioner Luella said, so.
I just, we've given them money every year. Last time that we gave up money, it was only for those two items as well. And they did send a letter. It was late, but I think even the proposal that was here that our Director of Finance put together, I think the proposal even said that we would give people until a later date this year in order to put in submissions. But if we're going to table that, then I think at a minimum, we should follow what we did the last time and the last couple of times because those were two things that were funded regularly. That's all.
So that's fair. Everyone okay with that? With the library, you said the library and the Chris Hickson Foundation. It's fine. Commissioner Davis?
I'm not okay with it, but I know that I'm outvoted, so let's just keep moving.
In all honesty, I mean, I personally think we shouldn't be funding anything if it's going to be, if we're going to table the whole thing, then we don't fund anything. But I think if you're going to insist on funding the Chris Hickson thing, and that scholarship, then we need to also include the library because we have been funding them. So, and they did make a request, so.
It specifically said they didn't need money this year because they were closed.
I don't remember them saying that they didn't need money because we got a letter afterwards.
Well, how about this? How about this? So we can move forward. Let's, let's say that we're going to fund both and reach out to the library to see if they need the funding. And hopefully in good faith, if they don't need the funding, they won't accept the funding.
By me.
Fine with me.
Okay. Frank, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine by me. I would also just want to clarify that at the budget workshop, you all decided to increase the charitable funding just in advance of this establishing of a policy and potentially awarding to other recipients. So would you like me to reduce it back down to the seven thousand five hundred dollars? We had previously had five thousand for the library and twenty-five hundred dollars for the Chris Hickson Scholarship Fund.
If we're doing what was consistent, then yes.
Thank you.
Okay. 10.2, the Dania Beach Grill, the city manager's recommendation of the top three firms to make presentations before the commission?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, commissioners, city residents that are watching, and our city team that's also participating tonight. So, we started with this process, as you know, back in 2020. Fast forward to when we issued the LOIs, the letters of intent. And this happened on June 1st. We've been on schedule, and we've been announcing every step of the way at every commission meeting. We're extremely excited. We had seven submittals. We have, we had the presentations. We have a committee of professionals representing the different departments. And listed here are the top three high-scoring proposals that I have here. They are Ellen Restaurants, PDKN Holdings LLC, and Caddy's Restaurant Group. We could have just recommended one presentation. We are recommending the top three present to you, but at the end of the day, it's your decision. We're just providing you some, some guidance and some structure. But we think that it'd be great that if you could get these presentations, once you make a decision, before the next meeting in September, so then we can move forward in the meeting in September to negotiate. And our goal would be to try to get a shovel in the ground as soon as possible. I know how much this has been anticipated, but also give you the opportunity to make a decision whether you want to see all three presentations of the top three, or as many as you would like. We would accommodate that for you.
Thank you. I had a conversation earlier with the city manager, and, you know, I did ask that we see the presentations for all of them, although they will, you know, we will understand what the recommendation is. I would like to see all of them in this entirety. I think that this has been a very long road, and this is a very important project. And I want to make sure that our residents, who have been very vocal about all of this, have the opportunity to see all of the proposals and the presentations and what it encompasses. So.
No.
No, the six? I know. Okay, okay. So, that's, that's my, that's my want, to be able to see all six presentations. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I knew this was going to come up, because everybody gets pounded with phone calls. You know, the process that we have out there is that we, I know that we can make a difference and make our own decision here tonight and change it around, but we're taking a step backwards. And the step forward is that we relied on the committee. We had, they did the RFP. Are they, people that did it on time, that were accepted? The, some of them, I read the, I read the things that came back, the proposal that came back. Some did not follow the guidelines that were on there, even though they met the proposal time. And we have the staff that has selected the three top proposals out of six. Now, we're going to open, once those three have been done, we should have, it should have been said that all six that had been qualified should have made the proposal at that time. Why did we go to the step of allowing three to be chosen? And why did we have a committee picked if we're going to go backwards? We, we have to trust somewhere in our staff that every time a decision is made, we can't question them on, we can, but we shouldn't question them on their decisions that they're making. And I think what you've done, you're going to do, is you're going to open a can of worms, because then the next thing that's going to happen is the person that didn't meet the deadlines is going to come up with, why can't I? Well, if you're making that change, why can't I come back again? And why can't I make my proposal? And my, my thing is, is I know the Dania Beach residents are anxious to have this open, but, you know, the Dania Beach Grill is the Dania Beach Grill that's open to everybody. That doesn't mean Dania Beach residents only. That means Broward County, out of state, and everywhere else. And I can tell you that, being a long-term Dania Beach resident, that the beach is highly occupied, probably a higher percentage than out of the city of Dania Beach, more from tourists and out of the city, because they love coming to our beach. And so, that's the, and I realize that 10 or 15 or 20 people are very vocal about wanting the beach to be, the grill to be what it was, and historical and stuff, you know, and, and, you know, enough, if you, I have a picture I found this week, that I found that my uncle built the grill. And it's, it's changed a lot from that time. And I'm just watching the, the progress we've been making in the last couple of months, and all the, and all the phone calls we've taken from the residents that are, you know, you guys keep talking, you never make any action, you guys keep it off, never on time. Right now, we're in a timeline that's working. And I feel that the three that, the proposal, I've read them. I think they're, all three are great selections. I'm not saying that the other ones weren't. Some of them didn't fall guideline rules, even though they're very prominent businesses, and I'm sure they've done well, but everybody can't be a winner. And I feel that we should move forward. I'm going to ask the commission to vote on allowing, just to keep the three, and to, I'm going to ask for your support to just keep the three, let them do the proposals, and, and stay on ground at that point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to put it on record that this is not me not trusting the staff or discrediting.
Well, I don't mean to sound that way.
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I fully support the staff and their capabilities. I also know that you have different, you like different things than I like, and I like different things that, you know, the other commissioners like. And we might like different things that the staff like.
That's why we vote on it.
Right. And, but we can't vote on something we can't see. So, I'd have total faith in, in the administration and the staff with, with this. And I'm not saying, me wanting to see all six isn't me saying that I don't trust the staff. I just want to know what's all there, and I want to, you know, it happened to be a very transparent process, like we've always been doing. But it's, it's our decision, and however it's voted up or down, I'm not going to lose sleep over it. I just, those are my two cents. Anyone else? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did have the opportunity to go through all of, all six of the ones that were presented. And I can say that from the LOI that went out saying what we wanted, really reflected what the residents wanted. They still want that feel, that tiki feel. They want to feel that there's open space where they can go and just have different items and different options. And from the ones that I did read, those top three incorporated what the people have been saying that they wanted. I'm even having trouble between the top three deciding the one that I like the most. So, I, you know, adding more to that, you know, is just going to make it more difficult. Public, do they deserve to see all the options? Perhaps they should just, you know, I can understand wanting to see and hear all of them, because I wanted to read all of them. I would not have just wanted to have been presented with just three. I, I'm glad that I was able to see all of them, and, and I agree with the staff, and I agree that those top three are the best reflection of what the LOI requested. So, you know, I agree with the staff, but I, I want to be fair to the public in that if we just want to let people have the opportunity to know what's out there. But I, I do believe the staff did choose the best three, and I, I agree with the staff.
Commissioner Luella?
Thank you. So, this is, this is difficult for all of us, I think, because this is a very sensitive and important decision to make. And I mean, these bids have been out there for a while, and I know that there have been people who have asked for copies of them. They've asked, you know, it's out there for public records, so people can look at them. And, and I will say also that I tend to agree with the top three that were chosen as well. And I, and I did look at all of them, and I, you know, spent quite a bit of time going through them and really looking at a variety of things, not just the actual plans, but looking at timelines, and looking at who was involved, and looking at how that would impact the beach as a whole, and competition on the beach, which would be a good thing. So, I feel like at this point that it's, we've, there's been a lot of time for people to take a look at, these, these bids have been out there, what, for now, a couple of months now? For everybody to take a look at. And so, I do kind of feel like we do need to narrow it down at this point. And like Commissioner Davis said, I wanted to look at all of them as well. I wanted to make sure that I was looking at everything, and I could get my questions answered just from what I could see, and, and, you know, and if I had real serious concerns about any of the top three, and/or the bottom ones as well, if I felt like they should have been included, and they weren't, then that would be a different situation. But I do think, you know, again, and, and we do have a process in place, and we do have to trust our staff. And I do trust our staff in this. And I do think there was a lot of time taken to really go through these by this committee, and then again, by the city manager, and now by all of us. So, I would be, I would be more inclined to go with just the top three at this point, because I do agree it would open a can of worms if we start going into all of these. And there could be issues with other people wanting to come back and wanting to change the rules as well. And just for consistency's sake, although, you know, I do understand that this is really important, and it's, you know, it's, it's difficult. This is, this is one of the tough ones. It really is, because it's, it's, you know, something that's been very important to everybody. And I think everybody on this day has felt the same way, not just this commission, but the last commission. We want to do the right thing with this. This is one that I think we all agree, we're all on the same page with that. You know, we don't want this to become some sort of a monstrosity like you see in other cities, and we want to keep our beach special. So, I want to, I'm, I'm more inclined to lean towards just the top three. And this way, they could give us very thorough presentations, so that we can get all of our questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you for that input. I'm going to ask Commissioner Otman to give her input as well. And again, I don't think it's anything about us not trusting the staff, just as we all said, you know, we trust the staff for the top three, but we want to see the other three as well. That's the only, that's the only thing that I want to be able to give our residents. This is a decision that we're not going to be able to go back on once we make it, and this is a very final project. We are all very eager to get this on the road. I wish it was done two years ago, you know, so I, I'm, I'm with you all. It's a difficult one. Commissioner Otman, anything?
No, I mean, I think we're all on similar pages here, at least, knowing the importance of this, of this decision. And, you know, I'm of the thinking that while I understand wanting to read all of them, I do trust the ones that were picked. So, I'm okay with.
I don't understand anything that you're saying, really.
Okay, I rarely understand anything y'all are saying. But I'm, let me see if this helps. Does that help at all?
A little bit.
Okay. Anyway, I was just saying, I'm okay with, with the process, and I trust the, what it went through for the top three, and I'm okay with that.
Okay, she said top three, so that kills it. We can move on. It's, I mean, it's no sense of beating a dead horse. We don't need a motion. And it's, Tom, we don't need a motion in a second. We have the consensus, correct?
Correct.
All right, let's move on. Okay.
Thank you. What we'll do is we'll send you some, some dates to do the presentations, and we'll work around your schedules.
Will the presentations be done at the meeting?
Either a meeting or a workshop, however. You can have it any way you would like.
Okay, that kind of changes things. If it's at a meeting, then three. If it's at a workshop, then you should have all six. It doesn't make sense to have a workshop, to have six. How long do you anticipate these presentations taking each of them?
Not long. I think every, each presentation could take somewhere between 30 and 45 minutes.
Yeah, we need a workshop.
No, we could definitely have it in, we could schedule it for the next meeting.
The next commission meeting?
Yes.
45 minutes each presenter?
Or we could limit it, you know, to 30, and those are the only presentations we have.
Like, over two hours.
On, on the agenda. But that's why, well, that's why I wanted to have a separate meeting. We can have just a separate meeting for this. It's, it's up to you. I want to facilitate and give you all the options and work around your schedule.
Okay. Thoughts? Because I don't even know what to think of that. Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Luella.
I was going to say, I think you have to do a separate meeting, because we're going to have questions as well. And I think you're better off doing a workshop, limit them each to 30 minutes tops, and then we have some time to discuss it. And then we're done with the two-hour workshop and be done with it.
I like that.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor likes that. Commissioner Davis?
We'll schedule that.
I don't necessarily want to limit it to 30 minutes. I think it takes as long as it takes, because this is a longer item. We limited it to three because of the fact that it was so important. So, if you have details, if I have questions, if you have presentation, if your presentation is such that you're going to go through everything, I don't necessarily want to limit it. I understand being efficient and effective and being able to get your information out, but this, we are, we've agreed that it's only going to be three, so let the three do their thorough, their most thorough job, and let the best man or company, whoever, win.
I'm okay with that. Commissioner Otman?
I disagree with that point about the limiting on time. Anytime we've not done some kind of limit, things have gone crazy. So, I'm not saying it's a limit 30 minutes, but please at least put some limit on it. Otherwise, things can, can get out of control, and they have before.
Okay, I'll try to be mindful of the time, and we won't say 30 minutes per se, 45 minutes per se, but we'll try to keep in mind that we do have three presenters, and maybe try to keep a max on what the end time is for the workshop, yes?
Yeah, I think you're right, Mayor. I think Joyce is, Commissioner Davis is right on that. I think that if you, if the city manager tells the presenters to try to make it in 30 or 45 minutes, if they can get it done in that amount of time, I think it just suggests to them would help. But I think that, I think that, you know, it is a big decision, and I think that we need to listen to it and get it all, you know, all through our system. You know, if we can even do the workshop before the next meeting, we can even vote on it by next meeting.
We are not doing a workshop before the next meeting. We already have a workshop.
Try and.
Don't worry about it. We have a CRA budget workshop before the next meeting, so we can't do two. So, we're going to get in, get with city manager and get some dates, or y'all want to hammer that out now? I'm okay with it. Let's, let's do that.
Mayor, would you guys prefer 5:30 to 8:30, or 6:00 to 9:00? It, it, not, I'm not going to exceed three hours, you know, but just in case.
Okay, well, Commissioner Otman's laptop just died, so we don't even know what she wants to do with that. But I would assume 5:30 to 8:30. I would go for 5:30 to 8:30. What about the rest of you all? 5:30? 5:30. Vice Mayor? Yeah, I'll vote it. 5:30. It's already done. 5:30.
5:30 to 8:30?
So, we'll, we'll cut up, do the 5:30 to 8:30. And Commissioner Otman, we're going to, it's 5:30 to 8:30. We have not chosen a date, but does that timeframe work for you? You're muted. Yeah. She's on.
What day?
We, no, we didn't do a date yet. We just wanted to say the time first.
Okay, 5:30 to 8:30?
Or 6:00 to 9:00. Those are the two options.
Definitely the earlier ones.
Okay. Now, as for dates, let's see what we have. Let's, let's start with next week? Does next week?
I thought we were going to wait until after the next meeting because of the CRA workshop.
No, I, I was saying the CRA workshop, not to do that until after the budget meeting, because it was about the budget. But with this one, if we can do it next week, and possibly have something on the 28th on the agenda, or?
Yes, that would be good.
Okay, so next week, what dates can you, I cannot do Thursday.
I cannot do Friday.
So, not Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Those are all fine for me.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday are fine for Commissioner Davis. Are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday okay with you?
If you could give me two days.
Monday and Tuesday, and we're down to Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday. Okay, so we'll propose Monday and Tuesday, Mayor, and then we'll, we'll let you know. We want to make sure that all three are available. Okay, so we'll propose Monday and Tuesday, Mayor, and then we'll, we'll let you know. We want to make sure that all three are available.
Okay, so either Monday or Tuesday, please hold those days now. We'll make sure to get that out to the other people who, um, were. Responded to the bid or the proposals.
We'll let you know ASAP.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, we'll let you guys know ASAP. We'll, we'll send them those dates.
Awesome. Commissioner Commons, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, um, I think I'm gonna just start going backwards and go. Anyway, I just want to first say what a wonderful, uh, event we, nine eleven we had this past Saturday with the Lions Club. It was truly, um, a momentous occasion because we were, um, commemorating the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. And, um, Lions Club did a, uh, the Lions Club did a really good job of, um. You know, bringing the national anthem. We had our fire, we had our police, they recognized them as first responders. And, and so it was just a really wonderful experience. Um, we also had the car show and I was able to bring some of my girls, my pro-girls out. And they really enjoyed, uh, a wonderful, family-friendly event. So I want to thank the Lions Club for doing that, uh, at the Dania Beach Casino. I also would like to take one moment to brag on our wonderful Dania Beach lifeguards. Um, I love them. They're probably one of my favorite people on earth. Um, they just work so hard each and every day to keep our beach safe. Um, this past summer, they competed in Siesta Key with the entire state of Florida lifeguards. And we have the top woman and the top five man in the entire state of Florida. And even though Fort Lauderdale Beach and all these other beaches, they have thirty and forty participants. We still came in the very, very top. So I'm very proud of them for that. And they even invited me to do a five K run for the Mercedes-Benz Corporate Run with them. And while I am the slowest and it usually takes me an hour to, uh, do a five K. Cause I do walk one every day. It takes me an hour to walk one. I didn't want to embarrass them, so I tried to run. And, uh, I was able to do that in, in, in a little over thirty minutes. So they were very proud of me. And Manager, I do want to talk to you and Candido because I think that was such a great community event. It brings people together. I would love to see our city do a walk or something where we talk about being healthy, the health, the health of our city, the health of our staff. Um, you know, and it was just a great, great way to bring the community together. So I will be talking about that because it really was just such a wonderful bonding experience. So, uh, that is all. I believe I'm always forgetting something, but I'll bring it up next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Keyword, walk. Make sure it's walk.
I almost died.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be very brief tonight also. Um, I also attended the, uh, Moonlight Car Show. Um, and absolutely agree that they did, the Lions did a fantastic job in commemorating, uh, the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. Uh, bringing, they actually, um, honored our, uh, our fire department, uh, BSO Fire, as well as the BSO Police. They gave them a, a beautiful, um, print, basically, I guess. It was, uh. Very nice and it was, uh, just, it was a nice thing to commemorate. Another thing about that day, it was really good to see people out. And enjoying themselves. Um, and it was outside, which was good. So although it was a bit crowded, at least it was outside and people were spread out and, and really enjoying the fresh air. Um, although it was really hot during the day with the sunshine. Um, and I look forward, I do look forward to seeing more of these events coming, um, in the future. Um, we've already talked about Dania After Dark and the seafood festival coming back. And, um, you know, there's a motorcycle show coming up in January. There's just a lot of things coming up and it would be really, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing more and more of that. With that in mind, I just want to remind people that we do still have COVID testing, correct, over at the garage? Um, our parking garage, so, and they do have Sunday hours. And we, I think we may be the only one or one of maybe two places in the entire county that has Sunday hours. So, um, if you know anybody that needs to get tested, been traveling or, um, potentially exposed or whatever. They need to get out there and get tested. Um, and we do have it available and it is free and it's, um, easy. So, and then, um, there's been a lot going on, but I'm just, I also just want to, um. Wish a Happy New Year to those that celebrated Rosh Hashanah and a meaningful Yom Kippur, which is coming up this week. To those who also celebrate. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Otman.
I've got nothing received, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I did a lot of everything again that they did. Uh, so there's, it gets to me, there's not much to say. I do want to, uh, let the residents know that, um, on Saturday, October the ninth, at the casino, there is the Deuces Wild. Uh, MMA Live Amateur, uh, get your tickets and, uh, they'll have, uh, it'll all be under, um. The, uh, CDC guidelines and, uh, it's something that we're starting to bring to Dania Beach. I hope you enjoy it and come on out. Other than that, I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just want to remind everyone about the community meeting again. If you wish to attend, um, it will be Monday, September the twenty-seventh at six o'clock. At St. Ruth's Missionary Baptist Church. And another thing that I was able to do, um, for the last two weeks is really take a tour of all of our schools. I really encourage you all to take a tour of our schools, not just in our city, but in our district. Um, because we have a few schools that are in our district that are located in the city of Hollywood. You'd be amazed by, um, what our residents and our kids are having to endure. Um, including a lot of buildings with no AC and we see how hot it is now. Um, a lot of facilities that, uh, need to be torn down, just structures and, and, you know. Not having necessary playgrounds and promises from the school board. And so I, I am going to start attending those school board meetings and, and, um, advocating for our schools. But I, I, I just really, um, would encourage you all, especially when we are speaking about. Bringing more people and more residents here, which is more families and more children here, they will have to go to our schools and our districts. And I am not proud of the way that our schools look. It has nothing to do with the staff there. The staffs are very lovely. They are very energized and wanting to be able to do the best that they can with what they have. But their hands are kind of tied with promises from the bond money and the smart bond and allocations and everything that's happened. So, uh, if you have some free time, set up a, a meeting with principals and, and please just go into our schools. So you can see their facilities firsthand. Um, it, it is a big difference depending on where the school is located. And then it is another big difference of the issues and items and things that, um, the facilities are going through. And they're, they're a great concern for me, safety. And that is all that I have for my comments. And we will move on to appointments. Do we have any appointments? No appointments, we'll move to the admin report.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also wanted to emphasize what you have just said about the school. Um, I, I've noticed in a lot of cities, if, if we accept the conditions of our current school, um, then they do nothing. We have to constantly be on top of them, write letters, meet with them. Because I too find the conditions of, of our school not to be a, at, at a Dania Beach standard. The, the standard that, that, that this commission has set and this administration, I said, have said as well. So I, I recommend that as well. We will do that as well as staff. And seek to meet with the interim superintendent and bring that to their attention as well. Um, like Commissioner Llewellyn said, the testing has been going outstanding. I'll get Candido to give us the numbers. But we had just surpassed, I believe we're close to four thousand in testing. Um, but, uh, Sunday through Thursday, eight to five, no wait, no line, super convenient. Great point to do it after you come back from vacation, after you come back from a conference. It's, it's, it's a great, great, um, service that we have there for, for our community. Um, very excited that we have completed the painting of the Malaluka Wall. Um, we're talking about seven feet high, three thousand five hundred linear feet. And kudos to our great team in public services. Now we're working on, on landscaping. Um, we're also working, uh, very closely with public services. And, um, to ensure that we send letters and I'm, I'm going to pull in Tom and Eve as well. Um, to, uh, whether it's the airport, FDOT, FEC, the county. Every single one of these entities that have a responsibility in our city, they need to bring it and they need to step it up. In regards to, um, what they're responsible for. That's a conversation that I know I was having with, um, a Vice Mayor this weekend. So rest assured that all those entities will receive letters, not just phone calls, but emails from us as well. Um, we're about forty percent complete with a southeast drainage, uh, project design. I know that does another big one that everybody's looking forward to it. Um, we look forward to submitting within the next six, six weeks to Broward, Broward County for approval. And, and we want to expedite those steps in regards to putting a shovel in the ground, uh, for, um, our residents here. And that are greatly affected by the drainage, drainage challenges that we've had there in the, in the past. Um, we're working and we're moving forward with the Ocean Park Drainage Improvement Project as well. As well as all the improvements, um, refurbishing, um, the pier, which include. The secu, we secured the permits from, from Broward County and the city of Dania Beach. We've installed a wood platform to perform walk safely, pressure clean and spalved all the pilings. Built the forms to cover the, the pile jacket. We've installed additional galvanized eight-feet-long, um, rebar. Um, spalved over the piling and we've coated all the exposed rebar. So basically, in every point of our city, um, we are working feverishly to bring. Um, not just the level of service, but all the things, um, that came out of the strategic plan. And is a priority for you, um, for the benefit of our community. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, I wanted to report that, uh, we have met with the, discussed rather, with the, people called the One Thousand Mermaids Project. We've gotten a letter as we asked them to send us as to whether or not they could make a deployment that would at least be somewhat consistent with what the commission wanted to do. I have the letter and a map. My reading of it is that they are not able to do that. But they have alternatives they propose. So I don't know if you want us to, uh, bring this to you for discussion of possible action. So you can see and hear from them what they propose, because I know you've put so much time into it. Or have us decline and say we want our money back, which is about fifty thousand dollars. They've already hired a lawyer, so it's come to the, it's come to that point of, we haven't talked to the lawyer yet. But we have had, discussions have been friendly with the people. But we certainly didn't want to be the legal department making decisions for what you might want to do. So if you direct us to sending this, uh, letter and map to you and then want to discuss it, we can do that at your leisure.
Um, may I, may I? Um, or Commissioner Mattman? So, yeah, it, it's, I, I think it might be something, perhaps you want to hear from them. And then also, um, if we could get Eve to explain the situation as well. It, it's something that, I, I feel like if, I, we just sent you the map. Uh, it might not be quite clear what the problem is. So I, I think it's, you know, probably only fair, uh, Eve, are you, are you around? Are you still up? Uh, there you are. Um, Eve, would you?
Yeah, cause I'm, I'm really confused that what's the issue?
Right, and, and it's not, it's, the issue, I, I don't know, I would need ten minutes to explain it and that's ten minutes more than. I feel like anyone wants to hear me talk right now. So, um, Eve, what do you think is the best way to present this information? So that, um, my colleagues here can make a, a well-informed decision on how they would like to move forward.
I was just unmuted. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Uh, very briefly, the One Thousand Mermaids, um, had plans, as you know, by the Dania Beach. About forty feet deep into the water to put all the, um, the structures that we purchased. Into the water for the scuba diving. And it took, took a man-made coral reef. In short, the Navy came back and said, no, you can't do that and you can't put it anywhere in the waters of Dania. Because, um, we have testing there for the Navy and it, it would interfere with all that. We, and it would become an attractive nuisance by having divers go near where we're doing our testing. And because of that, the contract says, you know, they had to get Navy approval. So they, they've already gone out, spent over fifty thousand dollars on the structures. We've taken some pictures, as you know. Um, there was a, uh, a presentation to the community of this opportunity that we were going to have these structures in the water. When, uh, Tom Ansborough and I, uh, talked with One Thousand Mermaids. That, we asked them for what are their, you know, how are they going to make us whole? Would, are they going to give us our money back? And they told us they had a couple of options of what they were looking at. One of the options is to place these structures in another location. I asked for a map direct, to show us exactly where they're talking about. Well, it's in the waters of Hollywood and looks like it's off of Hollywood Boulevard and forty feet of water. So I don't think Hollywood will be very, uh, happy to see, you know, welcome to Dania Beach and underwater. And I don't think our city would be happy about that either, but that's one of the presentations. They additionally have been reaching out to the city of Hollywood to see if the city of Hollywood wants to do this project. Not with the city of Dania's, uh, name on it perhaps, but perhaps take over the costs associated with all the other structures. And put those in the water. Um, so that would somehow make the, make, um, the city whole. By reimbursing the city for the structures that we've paid for. Um, and I don't know what other options they may have. So what we're talking about is perhaps coming to the next meeting, inviting One Thousand Mermaids to come and show you the presentations. I've asked them for other areas, not, you know, off of Hollywood, but within the city of Dania Beach's waters. If they could, if, you know, if there's any possibility. Um, and they said they would look at that and see what the Navy says. Um, but those are the options that they've given us so far. And if you do not like these options and the, the Navy does not approve of the location that we had originally talked about. Then it would look to a demand letter and possible litigation if they don't pay us back.
If I may, Mayor, just one clarification. I, I, when I last came to you, I think two meetings ago, to tell you about the exciting, uh, updates that we had for you. It was the next day, we had an extensive, uh, and comprehensive meeting with everybody involved in this. In Broward County and the liaison with the Navy and so on and so forth. They made it abundantly clear to me for the first time, unfortunately, that there was no chance. In any, in any situation, that in any possibility, in any place. Could there be these mermaids in Dania Beach? It's not a possibility. So that's Broward County and the Navy talking.
Right.
And, and, and these were meetings that also, I mean, Candido, he came out for one or two meetings. Um, you know, the, a hundred, a thousand mermaids, they're, they're great people. They had great intentions. But unfortunately, this wasn't, uh, like their, like West Palm Beach where things seem to go seamlessly. We unfortunately have, um, uh, impassable restrictions. And there's no amount of negotiating that can be done, um, in the next ten years to change that. Uh, I, I think. Candido, do you, do you agree with that assessment or is there anything you want to add from those meetings we went together?
Well, right before he asks anything, because he's muted, um. Is there, did we discuss any of the options? Listen, I, I, I don't know if, um, the Hollywood residents would make a big stink. Because, you know, like they did with the signs above water and on land. Possibly even on the area where we have our lifeguard stand. And it's located in Hollywood, I know it is. Um, if it's like on the border of that or maybe one inch or two feet in Hollywood right there, because that's kind of still. Next to Dania Beach, I mean Hollywood Boulevard is two exits away from Dania Beach.
If I, I think it would be better if you actually saw the, the underwater map. Because the city jurisdictional waters is different from the physical location map. Cause I actually asked the same question you did. And I think that would be beneficial to you in this discussion.
Yep, Mayor, if I can, uh, because we did see the, the map. And, and the map goes all the way to the, to the, to Dania Cut. It goes north past Hollywood, past the park and south past, uh, Dania Beach Boulevard. And it, and it goes far out east. So not only does it, it, it cover our beach area, our jurisdiction, it also goes. So not only does it, it, it cover our beach area, our jurisdiction, it also goes past it. And, and, and Commissioner Otman, just to, to, I, I agree with everything you said. The Broward County said they weren't going to issue a permit. The Navy said they weren't going to approve it. And we even received a very astern email from the Navy, from a, from an engineer from the Navy, pretty much warning us, do not proceed. There's hi- highly sensitive uh, uh, um, equipment underwater. They do not want people diving or even stopping their boats, trolling or anything of that nature over this area. And, and again, I, it's unfortunate that we have to find this out at the eleventh hour.
Okay, we'll wait for our presentation.
Thank you for the direction.
What was that, Commissioner Otman?
I said, so do you guys want to hear from them or you, would you like to go with the recommendation of your assistant to the attorney and to the attorney?
Man, I would like to hear from them. We've already invested this much in it. I would like to see a presentation uh, and a map and understand while we're making whatever decision, at least give them an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else? It's just, yes, alright. Right, you guys.
Thank you for the direction.
That, that's all I've got. I, I do want you to know that I had asked them before they started this thing, you need to make sure you get clearance from the Navy. I said it three times.
Yep.
Apparently, for whatever reason, there's a glitch. It did happen. Life goes on, but it wasn't because I didn't warn them. I knew that the Navy had jurisdiction there. Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
We got you, Tom.
Alright.
Not your fault. Tom said it's not his fault.
Not his fault.
Not blaming you.
Not, not a matter of fault, it's a matter of-
On my watch. Alright, uh, thanks, Tom. City Clerk?
Thank you. Upcoming reminders, Tuesday, September twenty-eighth at five PM is a CRA budget workshop, followed by your regular city commission meeting at seven PM. I'll remind you that the seven PM city commission meeting is much like, uh, will be much like tonight's meeting. It'll, it will be a hybrid meeting where at least three of you commissioners are required to be physically present for a quorum due to the budget, final budget hearings. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Can, can I ask a favor?
Yeah, it's probably gonna be the same favor I'm gonna ask.
Well, I was gonna ask for somebody to, well, we need to get it tested, but that was, I, I want to make sure that the um, workshop that we're going to have um, on, for the presentations, that we actually are gonna get a reminder on that as well, calendar invite. We want to do that for the CRA thing as well, that we get a calendar invite.
I just think that should be a normal uh, operating procedure that any meetings that we do, that it could just be on our calendars, cause it will be forgotten about.
Even our meetings.
No, everything. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is that feasible, um, City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, Mayor. We got that.
Alright, awesome. Well, you all have a great night. I am excited. It is nine-thirty and we are out of here. Good evening.
Good night.
Good night, guys. Good night. Thank you.